Everybody, to the November 21st Bellevue City Council regular meeting. Before we start, we had a tragic loss this morning when we lost one of our police officers. And it's a reminder every day that our first responders go to work, they put their lives on their lines for our community safety. And so I just have asked Deputy Mayor to speak in gratitude for this officer's life of service and to his family as well. And he speaks for the council. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this morning Bellevue Police Officer Jordan Jackson sustained critical injuries on duty when his motorcycle was struck by another vehicle on Bellevue Way. We were informed this afternoon that he has passed away. Officer Jackson was an exemplary officer who was well-liked by his colleagues. He joined the department in 2018 and frequently volunteered for community events. He was always proud to show off his motorcycle to all the young kids. Our hearts go out to his family, his wife, and two young children, and his colleagues in the department. We mourn your loss and stand by you during this difficult time. Please know that you have an entire community that loves and supports you. In honor of Officer Jackson, I hope you will all join me in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Councilmember Barksdale, you ask to speak as well.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. So when I saw the news, one of the things that you may not know is Officer Jackson and his partner were always out. And I also ride a motorcycle. And so when I'm out and about and I ride, sometimes I'll pull over and chat with the officers. And Officer Jackson and his partner were frequently who I saw out and about when riding, whether it was at an event, again, as Deputy Mayor mentioned, letting kids take pictures with their motorcycles, and always keeping it clean. We would talk about tires, we would talk about wind screens, hand warmers, and, you know, I'll really miss the opportunities to connect with Officer Jackson and then thinking about his partner because they were, I mean, they were always together. So I know that's a big loss for the department and for his partner and for his family.
Thank you. Okay. A city clerk, could you do roll call, please?
Ms. Lynn Robinson.
I'm here. Deputy Mayor Noonhouse.
Here.
Councilmember Barksdale.
Here.
Councilmember Lee.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson.
I'm here.
Councilmember Stokes.
Here.
And Councilmembers on.
Here.
Councilmember Robertson, could you please lead us in the flag salute?
Please rise and join me in the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we have two proclamations tonight. We have Native American Heritage Month and Small Business Saturday Proclamations. The first one will be read by Councilmembers on, and I believe Lisa Weber is here to accept that, and Dr. Whitehead as well. You have a chance to speak, and we can do a photo if you'd like. Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Whereas Native Americans have been living in North America for tens of thousands of years, and whereas in 1990 President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution for November to be called National Native American Heritage Month, and whereas we recognize that Native Americans are not a single nation but a variety of cultures, nations, and languages with rich, diverse, and sophisticated historical social structures, and whereas this month is an opportunity to recognize the accomplishments of tribal communities as well as the many societal challenges and historical wrongs imposed upon them, and whereas we support tribal governments and economies, recognizing that they provide critical infrastructure, social services, and jobs in our communities, and that Native Americans are responsible for many contributions to areas including medicine, art, architecture, and ecology, even though many of these achievements have been neglected in our nation's written histories. And whereas we take this opportunity to express our deepest respect to the original caretakers of this land, who continue to live here and honor their unique ancestry and traditions, and whereas the City of Bellevue honors the heritage of all local and regional Native Americans, Alaskan natives, and other indigenous communities, now therefore I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim the month of November 2022 as Native American Heritage Month in Bellevue and urge all residents to reflect on the contributions and traditions of tribal communities that help make our diversity our strength as we embrace the future while respecting our past.
Thank you, Councilmembers on. Lisa Weber, are you here? Okay, Dr. Whitehead.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and City Councilmembers. Thank you very much for the reading of the proclamation, Councilmembers on, and Mayor Robinson approving that. Lisa Weber, who is a part of our Be Dan program, was supposed to be here tonight. We just actually finished dinner, and she had to go home. So I do apologize. But very quickly, I would like to just sort of take us back for a moment. All of you in sixth grade history, maybe fourth, it was in 1621 that we got to celebrate our first Thanksgiving. So over 400 years ago, Native Americans, it was 90 in total, came together with 53 pilgrims to celebrate a harvest celebration, which, moving forward, this is what we celebrate as Thanksgiving. And this was a time to share resources, to share food, and moments for being thankful. So I thank you all again for honoring that. Thank you.
Thank you. I will hand this to you, Dr. Whitehead. I don't know that we need to do a picture.
I want to get a picture.
You can if you want.[461.43][461.43](Laughter). Thank you. All right. The next one is the Small Business Saturday Proclamation. Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor.
And, excuse me, I know who we have. Who do we have accepting this? I forgot. Oh, Kim Fredericks from the chamber.
All right. Whereas we celebrate our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our economy and community, according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are 650,000 small businesses in Washington, representing more than 1.4 million workers. And whereas 97% of all firms located in Bellevue are small businesses with fewer than 100 employees, and whereas small businesses were particularly impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and related economic effects, including workforce and supply chain challenges, and whereas nearly half, 46%, of small businesses in Washington are women-owned and 15% are minority-owned, according to the Brookings Institution, these businesses face unique challenges that are exacerbated by the economic effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas the City of Bellevue collaborates with the Bellevue Downtown Association, Visit Bellevue, and many more local partners to support our local businesses as they create jobs, boost our local economy, and define our neighborhoods, and many city programs are designed to specifically benefit small businesses and community members. And whereas advocacy groups and public and private organizations across the country have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving in the U.S. as Small Business Saturday, now therefore I, on behalf of Lynn Robinson, Mayor of the City of Bellevue, Washington, and on behalf of its city council, do hereby proclaim November 26, 2022, as Small Business Saturday in Bellevue and urge all residents of our community to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year.
Thank you, Councilmember Barksdale. Is Kim Fredericks here? Would you like to speak? Okay.
Good evening, council. It's a pleasure to be here, representing the Bellevue Chamber and representing so many small businesses within our community that are in many different districts. We encourage everyone to consider going out this Saturday and many Saturdays to come and visit our small businesses in Bellevue and the region this area exists. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. Let's do a picture. Okay, next up is approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
I move to approve the agenda. Seven.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. City Clerk, do we have anybody signed up for oral communications?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, there are five preregistered speakers for oral comms, and I believe all of them are joining us here in person tonight. Before I start calling names, I'll remind the public that oral communications is for a period not to exceed 30 minutes. Each speaker will have three minutes to make their comments, and only three speakers are allowed to speak to any one side of a particular topic. And with that, I will start with our first name, it's Catherine Hollis. Ms. Hollis?
Mayor Robinson, City Council, it's great to be here this evening. I am here on behalf, Catherine Hollis, on behalf of East Trail Partners, just to share our gratitude and thanks and our support for you all's City of Bellevue state legislative priorities on transportation, specifically the request for dispersal of Move Ahead Washington funds for east trail projects in Bellevue and for the phased dispersal of funds for the next segment of the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trail in Bellevue. So it's great to be here and more of a celebration that these funds have been allocated, and we just need to advocate for getting them to projects quickly. So the state funding for east trail projects is needed as soon as possible. Projects like the I-90 Steel Bridge cannot get started without funding in this next biennium. And for the phased funding for the next segment of the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trail is critical to maximize a federal grant. So excited that we have good news on these things and that we really need to be focusing on that funding coming to Bellevue and to these projects in the next biennium. These two trails will provide key east-west in the case of the Mountains of Sound Greenway Trail and north-south in the case of the east trail in terms of great bike and pedestrian routes in Bellevue that are really transform our transit options here on the east side. The east trail specifically will connect communities from Renton through Bellevue all the way into Snohomish County, directly connecting with four light rail stations and other trails like the Mountains of Sound Trail. So it's been an honor to get to work with you all and with the City of Bellevue on east trail, and we look forward to a whole lot more good news to come. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Annika English.
My name is Annika English, and I'm a sixth grader at Odo Middle School, and I'm here to talk about Bellevue's large trees with trees for livability. Today is the day that tree code work is starting. This is a very important step we need to take to prevent trees from being cut down with no permit or regard for their size. I hope you will come away with strong tree codes that will make Bellevue a city others will look to as an environmental leader. So I would like to thank the city's council for taking on this work because they are keeping Bellevue a great place to live.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker is Alex Zimmerman.
Thank you. Zihai, my doing them Nazi fascist mob bandita and psychopath. My name is Alex Zimmerman, a president of Stand Up America, and I'm candidate for Bellevue Council 23. So I right now speak to everybody who want be a candidate. We have too many problem right now. I see agenda is a nightmare, you know what it means, too many bullshit. Pardon, BS inside, sorry for my French. So I speak right now to everybody who want be a candidate. We need a forum every two weeks. Start today, like my Donald Trump told me, start today. This exactly what is we need doing right now. For last many year, they, Democrat, stopping forum totally. Nobody have a forum right now, nobody. And I live here for 35 year. Where is forum for last year, for five year ago? Nothing happen. They totally control us. This a fascism is exactly what is my memory, you know, memory, memo. You know what it means, what is explained, what is going on for Seattle and King County? It's a epicenter of fascism. I give you example of Seattle. Seattle never have freedom of speech, never have pledge of legend. In the last seven months, they never show people faces when they speak. What is possible? How is this possible? Who this freaking idiot, you know what it means, who can doing this? When you speak, then show faces. So right now, they neutralize everything by console, Seattle console faces 24/7. Why you doing this? So right now, we speak in talking about discrimination. What is discrimination? We don't have discrimination now because we don't know who's white, who black, who yellow. It's very simple right now, you know what it means, when this not fascism. So what is mean word fascism? I spoke right now, we 30 people in back, you know what it means, and ask them, make copy from this, so you understand what is mean fascism. They pardon idiot, don't know what is mean fascism. For them fascism is when German Nazi killed Jew is fascism. They don't know what is mean fascism. They lazy, go to Wikipedia and understand what is mean word fascism. This fascism what is we have right now in Seattle and country, not believable. King Country Council never have a free speech, never have people in person speak. They totally block everything. So I speak right now to everybody. When we change this council chamber totally from this garbage, we can change Seattle, we can change King County. Stand up America. This exactly what I speak to everybody. Everybody who will go to console, Bellevue Council 23, you know what it means, we have a forum every week, every two weeks. Stand up America. Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kate Sayers.
That's a tough act to follow. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and Councilmembers, I'm not speaking on behalf of the tree group. I'm speaking for myself. I love trees. I want trees. And I am completely depressed by the denuding of my neighborhood. This morning, I drove down the street, and all the trees, the large trees that were next to the Sears store are gone. All the trees on the Department Development on 24th were taken out. All the trees by the school in my neighborhood that's near, I forget which one it is, they were all taken out. All the large trees are taken out. The large trees, the maples were taken out when Newport High School was rebuilt, when they fixed the sound to Greenway area for bicycle trails, all the large maple trees were taken out, and I want you to fix this. I want you to stop. My neighborhood in particular, Crossroads area, is being denuded more because you're planning on jamming a bunch of development in there. You took all the large trees out of the Spring District, and yet places like Bridle Trails, Medina, Clyde Hill, and Somerset where I used to live are fully treed, are gorgeously treed, and they're not getting cut down because they're not experiencing the kind of development that destroys trees. What I'd like is for codes that cover building of schools, new buildings, new things along the sidewalk. I'd like you to get a city forester, hire somebody from the International Society of Arborists on a part-time contract to come and do a tree plan for us, and put in place back all the trees that we have lost. You know how much of our canopy has gone, and if you look at my area around Crossroads, you'll see that the tree canopy has been deforested more there than in any other part of the city besides, it's probably the Spring District. So please, consider adding trees to parking lots so I can park in shade under a big tree, not these little sticks that they put in service berries. I'm sorry, they're not even trees, they're sticks with leaves on them. I want arching trees. I want tall cedars. I want lofty sequoias. I want big trees. And you can do it. You're capable of coming up with a plan, hiring the staff, even on contract, to come up with a plan for our city. We need this. We miss this. Please take care of this. Thank you.
Thank you. The next. The next speaker is Dr. Sumerzer.
The trees are coming down in the nicer areas.
Please, no comment. That's all right.
Thank you for listening, City Council. I've been trying to reach to speak to several of you prior to the meeting so we could discuss so many issues that are concerning me. Some of you know that I have a nonprofit and that I house homeless people, and over the years, some of those people have had mental health issues, and most recently, I went through this again. I am a physician, I am retired, and I housed a physician who may be a member of Menza, but as you probably know, paranoid schizophrenia is no respecter of intelligence. And so you have a budget, and I believe you have something to do with homelessness, something to do with mental health. I want you to carefully watch how the money is spent. I have no faith in sound mental health, having had a person who was staying with me, being cared for by them, and the nurse practitioner did not follow his medications with a proper lab work, and if I hadn't been the landlady, he would have died. And you've got to make sure that your money is spent wisely. And I don't know if the city council can pass a law so that a 72-hour hold is a 72-hour hold. Speaking with the various officers, more than one officer told me how frustrated they are when they take someone in, four 72-hour old, and see them on the street six or 12 hours later. I'm going to be talking to the state legislator to make it a state law and the council tomorrow, King County, but whatever you can do in addition to make our city safe and to make the people with mental health and addiction problems safe, to get them off the streets, make sure that we have good addiction recovery programs and enough beds for the mental health that we need. In a 72-hour hold, we need to observe them, and I would like to see two separate psychiatric evaluations, not using the Minnesota Multiphasic Personality Test at all, but an M.D. or a D.O. psychiatrist separately, not in the same practice, evaluating the person before they're put out on the street again.
Thank you. Thank you. That is the end of our preregistered list. I'd ask at this point if there's anyone else joining us this evening in chambers or online who would like to make comments, please raise your hand now. Mayor, I do not see any hands. Okay, thank you. Next up, we have the report of the city manager with some very good news. Mr. Miyake.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. I have one item under the city manager's report, and that is bringing to your attention a very generous donation that goes towards the Botanical Garden. Joining us this evening to talk about this generous gift is Michael Shiasaki, our Parks and Community Services Director, and accompanying him, the donor, Terry Hayes. With that, I'll go ahead and turn it over to you, Michael.
Mayor Noonhouse and members of the city council, I am absolutely thrilled to be here this evening to introduce and to thank Terry Hayes. Terry has been a longtime supporter at the Bellevue Botanical Garden, and she recently established an endowment through the Seattle Foundation to fund a full-time curator position at the garden in perpetuity. And as we all know, this kind of generosity doesn't come the city's way too often. The new curator position is currently a part of the city's 2023-24 proposed budget, and it will play an important role in achieving the garden's core goal, which is connecting plants with people. So what does a garden curator do? Well, the garden curator oversees the garden collection or the plants, and the garden is really akin to a museum, and the plants are the living collection. So the curator fosters this collection by accessioning and maintaining records of individual plants, and these records have scientific value, but they also need to be approachable and usable by the general public. So the curator has expertise, we hope, in horticulture, taxonomy, and nomenclature, all kind of plant geek words, but as well as the skills of communication and education to enhance the garden's public benefit to the community. And this position will play a uniting role between the garden collection and conservation and education. Terry's supportive and deep understanding of the garden's operational needs has led to this unique and generous donation to the City of Bellevue, and the endowment will ensure the viability of the Parks position in perpetuity. So with that, I'd like to thank you, Terry, for your dedication to the garden and your incredibly generous donation. And now I'll turn over the mic to you for remarks. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Director Shiasaki. Good evening, Mayor Robinson and the city council members. After 30 years of volunteering and supporting the Bellevue Botanical Garden, I am honored to be able to endow a full-time curator's position. I have celebrated many garden milestones, from the first national recognition by a horticultural publication to the completion of the visitor center. The curator is another one of these milestones. With the curator, the garden will contribute to horticultural knowledge about plants that enhance living conditions, help conserve biodiversity, introduce people to nature, and bring beauty to people's lives. The curator will help strengthen the botanical collection and provide a foundation for future educational programming. It is my intention to perpetuate Bellevue Botanical Garden's mission for the benefit of future generations. Thank you.
Ms. Sayers, that is a remarkable contribution to our city, and I want to thank you so much for your generosity. For over 30 years, the botanical gardens have provided access to everybody in our community and outside our community, easy access to the knowledge and the joy of all those plants, and this will make it even better. So I want to thank you very much. It's interesting to get to know who you are because so many times, we don't get to see the people who contribute so much like that. So thank you for being here tonight. Can we do a picture?
Certainly.
All right, let's do it.
You're welcome.
Okay, next, we have the consent calendar. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Well, let's see. We have two study session items tonight. First, we have our 2023 state legislative agenda, and then we will go on to the council initiation of tree canopy code amendments. Mr. Miyake, would you like to introduce?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. Just by way of background, each year, the council customarily develops a state legislative agenda in advance of the next legislative session in the upcoming January timeframe. This agenda allows staff and city officials to clearly articulate the city's legislative priorities to state lawmakers, state agencies, peer jurisdiction, and community stakeholders. Joining us tonight are Genesee Atkins, Chief of External Affairs, as well as Lacey Jane Wolf, Assistant Director of Government Affairs, both from the city manager's office. And with that, I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to you, Genesee.
Great. I'm sure this is coming right along. Thank you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor, and councilmembers for having us tonight. We are really excited to talk to you about the next state legislative session and your process to consider and adopt an agenda. I'll just jump right in. So this evening, we're going to give you a little bit of a preview of what we expect to be relevant and kind of the context in the upcoming state legislative session, and then we will do an overview at a high level of what is in the draft state legislative agenda that you have in your packet. Why don't we go ahead to maybe slide three?
The slides aren't showing on our screens here.
Yeah, there's a tech issue at the moment. If you want to pause for a minute, we can try and resolve. If you want to pause for a minute, we can try and resolve.
I can keep going. I can just, I promise, I can just, I can keep going if you want.
Do you want to, you want to start off and then we'll catch up with the slides?
So, give me one more. So we expect in the next session to be a substantial one. It'll start on January 9th. This will be a long session, so this is 105 days, not the shorter 60 days which we had earlier this spring. So 105 days kicking off January 9th, so it'll go toward the end of April. The big job in front of the legislature is to craft the three biennial budgets. So capital, operating, and transportation will all be kind of front and center. There will also be ample time for them to take up really complex and varied policy matters. We will see the first kind of marker on the budgets in late December, usually the third week of December is when we see the governor's proposed budgets. Those are heavily informed by the revenue and forecast review, and so really, we kind of kick off the session when we see the governor's proposed budgets in later December. And so that kind of sets up the context for what you've got coming. Where are we? I think we're going to slide five now, and now we'll kind of turn toward a little bit of context for you on some of the biggest issues that we're highlighting on the proposed draft agenda, and I'll turn it over to my colleague, Lacey Jane, to jump into that.
Hi, everyone. This year, we again expect legislators to introduce bills to address the state's affordable housing crisis. Like last year, we expect these bills to really be focused on include increasing the supply of housing through zoning. We have been working with the Association of Washington Cities and together really worked to prepare a response that says that zoning alone is not enough to solve the state's affordable housing crisis, that also significant state funding investment and local funding options are needed, as well as state regulatory streamlining. So your draft legislative agenda includes a priority section to that effect.
Turning now to transportation, the big headline here is actually one from last session, which is, we don't expect in the upcoming session for there to be a major transportation package. Last year or the last session this year, you recall the passage of Move Ahead Washington, which was $16.9 billion. That was full of lots of landmark achievements and frankly has washed out very busy, trying to figure out now how to allocate out all these brand-new grant programs, a number of which go toward local jurisdictions and local municipalities. Bellevue did really well in that package, especially for a city, and so the things we are going to highlight in this upcoming session are specifically how we want some of those dollars allocated out to part of the East Rail Corridor and then also to the Mountains to Sound Greenway. You heard in oral comment how important the timing is so that we can leverage some federal funds. So that's really where we want to kind of push our delegation, who have been so great at helping carry water for us. And then elsewhere in the agenda, we lay down a foundation for future projects that we expect, we want to keep a kind of a steady drumbeat and lay down some markers for that next package, which we know is not too far off, but very unlikely in this coming session. And then kind of rounding out, the third of our priorities is an item around services and infrastructure for a growing community. We highlight a couple of specific projects where we're seeking state support, one for a utilities project and one for a community services project. That, when we really said, what elevates up, what are the things that Bellevue really wants to highlight for our state delegation, these were, this rounds out the group in addition to affordable housing and transportation. So those are kind of the priority issues that really are specific to Bellevue that we want to bring home for our residents and our constituents. So turning the corner, we also have a really comprehensive document that you have all seen, our Statement of State Policy. That really gives us a lot of breadth and coverage to manage a lot of different bills that might come up. We know that the legislature will cover a lot of territory, and this really both lays down some principles that are important to you as our policy directors and elected officials, and then this gives us the marching orders to go out and weigh in on our behalf, whether it's something proactive, constructive, or if we want to kind of hold the line on something important and defensive, whether it's policy or appropriations. You can see the subjects here, I won't read them off to you, but we tried to really make sure that it was both comprehensive but also succinct. And then I'll turn to Lacey Jane for the next piece.
In the upcoming session, we'll once again partner with the Association of Washington Cities so that we and other cities can have a stronger voice with the legislature about issues that are important to cities. And I would love to point out that the five key issues that the statewide organization identified as our legislative priorities are all included in your draft legislative agenda before you tonight.
And then finally, in terms of what we will do after you have had time to consider the legislative agenda, is we will take the final adopted agenda and start to develop it into really good marketing materials. What you, of course, have in your packet is a rather uninspiring Word document that is not very appealing to the eye. We are going to, just in the past, can I get one more slide? We're going to convert this into, these are some from the past that you know and love, we're going to convert this into stuff with really compelling facts and information about Bellevue to not only get traction with our own 41st and 48th delegation members, but to also work with committee chairs, ranking members, and folks across the legislative spectrum to really tell Bellevue's story and be really compelling and captivating so that we can move the dial for the things we want to bring home. So I want to make sure you understand that that document is not going to be the final product, but we'll really lock in kind of the charge to us as your staff and spokespeople. So the action that we are seeking or recommending to you tonight is that you consider and talk about and ultimately adopt a state legislative agenda, either this evening or not, but adopt it well in advance of the next session, so we have lots of time to work with our delegation and other stakeholders to put ourselves on a really successful trajectory for January.
Thank you. I just want to thank you so much for the process. You've done a tremendous amount of getting feedback from all of us and from the community, and it really reads when I read this agenda, so thank you. Let's start with Councilmember Lee. Any comments or questions?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate what the staff has come up with. It's a really, very, very comprehensive, very well-done piece of legislation agenda, so thank you. And also, you have talked to us extensively. But during our discussion, and I feel that that's one thing, I like to have a council discussion on this, or at least consideration. In order to have a more significant or substantive discussion, I will either move an amendment, or should I just talk about it first, Madam Mayor? How would you prefer?
Why don't you start with your amendment?
Okay. I move that we strike the third sentence in the Fiscal Sustainability Financing Tools and General Government Section of the State Policy Statement. That sentence currently reads, Bellevue supports replacing the 1% cap on annual property tax levy increases with a limit that allows cities to respond to local needs. Seven. Thank you.
Okay, help me find this in our packet.
It's on page, it's under Fiscal Sustainability Financing Tools and General Government.
Okay.
On page.
Page three?
The three? Yeah.
Okay, I see it, thank you.
Thank you. May I continue?
Yes.
Thanks. Number one, first of all, I think this is a policy taxing, taxation policy, which normally the state makes, and it's a state policy, so it probably is not appropriate for a local jurisdiction, the city of Bellevue, to be engaged with. And secondly, maybe more practically, is that it does not give, or it's not in City Bellevue's interest to make this proposal. And I don't recall that we have a real extensive conversation on this by the City Council, so I would hope that by taking this out, we have opportunity to really discuss it. But my concern is now, because we've had this for the last almost 20 years. It is something, if we increase, lift the lid, okay, that means other jurisdictions and the state can naturally crowd the City of Bellevue's property tax levy out of the future funding for the City of Bellevue. We depend a lot of our revenues from levying on property taxes. So, you know, we are competing with a lot of folks, and they're competing with us. So I think that's one disadvantage that we may have faced, may face. The second one is that it's really quite a small amount of 1% we are talking about, because we haven't really utilized this too much. We have, those 1% we always ask for. It's a tax that we, amounts of about a million dollars a year, so it's a bit of a, and also by levying on property tax, we, as a city, Bellevue, we're very fortunate. Our property evaluation, because of the economic vitality and all that, continued to go up. So even at the 1%, we have been able to capture a lot of, you know, tax revenues. So with other cities, different, but you know, we don't actually, how, we should not be meddling with other cities' taxation and their revenue or expenditure. We, this is a fiscal measure, that's what we're talking about.
Okay, I hear what you're saying.
So as a result, I would like to move to remove this.
You've already made the motion.
Agenda, and perhaps we should continue this discussion, have a better understanding, how does it impact Bellevue, as I stated, but I'd like to hear what the other council members have to say, and what the public have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the motion and the explanation. I'm going to ask to throw it back to staff first to get some interpretation of your opinion on this motion.
Well, my interpretation, so I think, Councilmember, I think this is a matter for you all to discuss.
We will.
This is one of the enumerated top issues. It's not in the top five that we showed on the slide, but it is included as one of the top issues from the Association of Washington Cities, and the Association has carried this as a high priority for a number of years. So it is up to the discretion of the council about whether or not you want to include this in the Statement of Policy or not.
So as explained by Councilmember Lee, he feels like it's going to jeopardize our ability to get the money that we need for the projects we want it for. Is that, in your opinion, is that a risk?
I don't know if I follow that exactly. I don't, I don't, I might need to understand better, but I don't understand how it, how it might jeopardize what we're trying to have funded.
Okay. Any comments or questions, Deputy Mayor?
Thank you. Just maybe clarify Councilmember Lee's question or concern, and just so I make sure I understand it, is this just for cities, or by advocating for this, are we advocating that even the county could increase property taxes? I think Councilmember Lee is concerned about the fact, I mean, we already have incredibly high property taxes, we already put a tremendous burden on our residents. If King County is able to take advantage of this and increase property taxes and take a larger share, as hopefully most people know, we only get a very small percentage, about 8% of those property taxes, are we going to be losing out more on potential property tax revenue into the city by advocating for this? Are we better off not coming out perhaps as strongly as AWC, perhaps? I think, and I don't want to put words in Councilmember Lee's mouth, but I think that's what he's trying to communicate, his concern. So if you could speak to that, that would be wonderful.
Understood.
Thank you.
So this specifically is related to cities and not to the broader kind of statewide limitations that exist related to the property tax, but specific to cities. I know Lacey Jane and I were just on a call with AWC earlier today, where there was a meeting just last week of the, I think it's the finance, was it the tax?
The Legislature's Tax Work Group.
Work Group. They met on Monday last week, and they're still finalizing their recommendations. Prelimarily, it sounded like they recommended lifting the 1%, and this is a bipartisan group of legislators that have been working for quite some time on the state taxing structure. They're recommending adjusting the city property tax limit, but not the state property tax limit. So that does get into some level of granularity, and we can talk about that further. If we want to take this out and research it more and wait to see where that work group ultimately lands, that's fine, too. I will point out that later in the Statement of State Policy, there's a reference to the AWC priorities, so we can also kind of by reference, follow the lead of AWC in that direction if we want to as well.
What is the timeline in submitting this in final form and getting the advice from the AWC recommendations?
I think, so the recommendations from the Tax Work Group are probably not going to be finalized until, I think, the first or second week of December, so we would probably prefer that you act sooner than that, so we can have a lot of lead time. But if there is, you know, broadly-held concern among the city council members, we can take it out now, and then kind of, again, because we reference the AWC priorities, we kind of cover our bases there as well to take their lead, depending on what comes out of that Tax Work Group.
Okay, thank you for that.
Sure.
Any other comments or questions? Let's see.
Janice, do you?
Okay, I'm trying to keep track of everybody. Would you like to speak? Then we'll go to Councilmember Robertson.
All right, thank you. Just one quick question in terms of, from the discussion in the Tax Work Group, what was the motivation for it? Because I mean, I think some cities will have a different need for additional revenue from property taxes than others, right? And so just trying to get a sense if there was anything about motivation, like purpose that comes to mind.
About Councilmember, why they recommended modifying the city cap but not the state property tax cap?
Now, for example, did issues like housing, homelessness and such come up in terms of cities wanting more flexibility in order to generate the revenue for particular issues?
So I know that broadly, the desire, if I'm understanding your question correctly, I think broadly, the desire by AWC and its member cities to continue to talk about this issue around the property tax and its limitation, really is driven by the accelerating cost to provide goods and services. Really, it relates to inflation and kind of that structural deficit that municipalities find themselves in as inflation continues to drive up costs to provide just basic, you know, constituent and resident services. Labor prices and construction and goods and materials are all kind of going up, and that property tax keeps it, keeps a limit or a maximum on the upper end of that. And so I think it was just trying to acknowledge that, to keep pace with growth, an inflationary factor of some kind. Past AWC legislation has varied in terms of the actual bills that they've offered. Sometimes they specify the growth limit to a certain percentage, and sometimes it's been an amalgamation of factors, and so we don't know yet what may be brought forward. I don't believe AWC will offer its own bill this session. That's not my current impression. I think they are also kind of waiting to see what comes ultimately out of that work group, and they're not quite finished.
I'll just say, I mean, I can see supporting it. I mean, just because the cap is removed doesn't mean we have to necessarily, and it just leaves more options for each city and to fund the services that they need, so, thank you.
Did you say you can see supporting?
Yes.
The amendment to remove it?
No, leaving it in.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Robertson.
So the concerns that have been expressed, I understand, but the language in the agenda or the ledge agenda specifically limits it to cities, says a limit that allows cities to respond to local needs. There is only one city that our taxpayers pay tax to in Bellevue, and that is the City of Bellevue. So they wouldn't be getting layered on, if this stays in our ledge agenda and the legislature takes it up and passes it per our ledge agenda, they wouldn't necessarily be getting layered on by other taxing districts. This city has shown, I'm really proud that this city has shown a lot of This city has shown, I'm really proud that this city has shown a lot of restraint. We do not, we did not max out all of our revenue tools, we never had. When I first started serving as a city attorney for cities, the, in the 90s, there was 100, you could do a 6% every year. Every city I represented did 106% levy every single year. And then we had the initiatives by Tim Iman that lowered that to three, then to two, then to one. And 1% doesn't keep up with inflation. And with a city like Bellevue, we've been able to manage okay because we have a lot of other revenue sources like sales tax, REIT, BNO, utility tax. But the cities, other cities around the state that are entirely property tax dependent have very little commercial, they are cutting services and cutting services and cutting services despite the fact that those cities are growing. And one of the things I love about cities is they're very collaborative with each other. We support each other's ledge agendas as long as it, as long as it benefits you and doesn't hurt me, we'll support it. I see this in that context. If cities, especially ones that are heavily property tax dependent, need more money to pay their police officers, a living wage to make sure that they keep up with inflation, I don't see a problem with giving them the tools to do so. I don't see the problem with giving Bellevue the tools to do so. Whether this council or future councils take advantage of it is really up to them and up to the voters who elect them in. But there's a lot of tools out there for revenue that Bellevue does not use. Does not mean that they aren't valuable for other cities. So I say leave it in. I, I'm going to vote no on the amendment. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So to clarify, the amendment is to remove that sentence that says Bellevue supports modifying the tax increment financing tool in order to maximize its utility and application.
It's annual property tax levies.
Okay, so it's not the last, which one? This is what I'm trying to figure.
Third sentence under fiscal sustainability. It says Bellevue supports replacing the 1% cap on annual property tax levy increases.
That's my third sentence. Okay.
You see it?
Replacing the, yeah, okay, got it.
That's the one, and so, yeah.
Okay, so to clarify, on the table is that the city opposes, um, no, Bellevue supports replacing the 1% caps on annual property tax levy increases with a limit that allows cities to respond to local needs. And I think it'd be helpful if I put my glasses on. Okay, got it, thank you. Any other comments or questions before we take a vote? Okay, Councilmembers on.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I appreciate hearing from my colleagues. You know, when I think about this particular item, I think about the fact that it says allows cities to respond to their, to local needs. And really, we talk a lot about cities taking care of their needs because when need, when needs are not met, we can have secondary effects. And we really want to make sure that we have the tools that cities need and, you know, maybe someday Bellevue will be in a position where we actually need to do something. So I don't see a harm in leaving it in and I actually see more benefits in making sure that all of our neighboring cities, because we are very regional in many of the things that we do. And if we have cities that are struggling, that's actually not good regionally. So I would support leaving it in.
Okay.
Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Well, for all of the really excellent comments in support of leaving it in, I agree with that and appreciate the experience behind those, those comments. I, it just kind of stuns me to think we're wanting to take something out as said, it's maybe a hundred thousand dollars a year. And then we, we talk about incredible property taxes on, on people. The amount of, for each individual that this would affect is just in dollars. It's very small. But it's a, it, it is a revenue that we have on things that we really need, that people want, and we're way behind in terms of getting to things we really need to do just because of the, of the economy, because of the tax situation. And so to, to take something this small in effect out, but has great impacts in the future, would not be a smart thing for us to do. The other, I just want to ask you another question. Was SCA chimed in on this at this point? Sound Cities Association?
Have they?
Sound Cities Association has a draft legislative agenda and like AWC for years, it has included language similar to this, very similar to this.
Right.
So I would very much expect that in December, Sound Cities Association would adopt a legislative agenda with this language in it again.
Yeah. Well, it's, you know, these, these are two statewide organizations of cities. So the issue and the questions about it and what's good or bad has been talked about a lot. And we, you know, you have a document that has all of these cities, small cities, big cities, saying this is a good thing to do. And I just seen Bellevue say, no, we don't want to do that because I'm not quite sure why, would not be good. So I support, you know, the language as it is, as the, as my colleague here said.
All right, thank you.
I've got a one question for the staff.
Can I go through it, see if anybody else has a comment or question? Deputy Mayor?
Oh, I got a second chance? Thank you. No, I, I appreciate the conversation and the comments by my colleagues and your answer to that question as well. And certainly we do want to be good regional partners and the fact that AWC is supporting this too. So I appreciate though, Councilmember Lee bringing this up for consideration and discussion. I think it's an important one, looking after our residents and their tax burden. So thank you, Councilmember Lee, for bringing this up.
And I am inclined to support leaving it in as well, so not supporting the amendment. Councilmember Lee, go ahead.
I appreciate Deputy Mayor's, you know, concern, as I do, with the tax burden, you know, even though it's small, 1%, a million dollars. But as we know, property tax, the tax to the people are becoming more and more burdened. It adds up. It starts small, but it adds up.
I thought you said you had a question.
Yeah, our question is, the cities itself has already the ability to raise their property tax. It's 1% is the, you know, doesn't require a vote of the council. If the council of any city wants to assess more higher rate of property tax, they could, right?
Within that limit?
Yeah, within that limit.
The 1%?
No, no, no. They can increase their tax up to a certain limit. 1% is what they can have, right? But you, you can vote any amount of property tax, can you not?
Not council manic.
It's limited, that's what I mean.
Yes. Oh, oh, you mean through a vote of the people?
Yes, what, no, no, the council can actually vote to have imposed property tax.
Not beyond 1%. That's what the cap is.
Not more than 1%.
Unless they have bank capacity.
Yes.
Right.
Yes. Bellevue has been in a real good position because we have not raised property tax more than 1%. Actually, we've not raised it since we removed it and for the next 10 years. And other jurisdictions have seen it and they wanted to copy what Bellevue has done. So we've been responsible to our taxpayers and I'm still worried about the additional impact of that. So be it if the city council feel that we, it's okay to keep adding taxes.
You know what, Councilmember Lee?
Okay, I'm done, I'm done.
No, but that is not what's on the table, okay? That's not what's.
What's on the table is what, but I'm explaining.
That's not what's in our legislative agenda. It's, that's, and that's not, I, I am curious if you even understand what you're asking to take out, to be honest with you. So if you could explain the 1% cap that council manic decision-making has in, in property taxes?
So, and, and I'll just.
And for extra credit, you can add.
I was about to say, I might peek just over my shoulder to make sure that if there's a better expert. I, I'm, I have a good yeoman's knowledge of the property tax rules, but why not use an expert if you have one handy? Hello, Tony?
Nice to see you.
Yes, nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. The property tax laws in the state of Washington allow the council to take a 1% increase in the revenue of last year's revenue for property tax annually with the vote of the council of your choice. This council also has the option to use what's, what we call bank capacity in addition to that. That's previous 1% that were not taken in that year that have been banked at the county. That is another option. So the council only has the option to council manically take the 1% plus bank capacity. If you would like to go higher than that, those options, it would at the moment require the vote of the people. Does that answer the question at hand?
It does. So can you speak to the sentence that we are discussing?
The sentence we are discussing?
So what would replacing the 1% cap on annual property tax levy give us if that were to be voted in?
By the state legislature. If the state legislature chose a different number than 1%, it would allow the council to take whatever that percentage would be as an increase in the property taxes. And it would be an up to more than likely, depending on how they wrote the legislation. You would always have the choice of whether it was zero or one or a different number depending on the choice of the council.
Right, very good. Thank you for that explanation. Okay, I'm going to take a, let's just take a vote. All those in favor of the amendment to remove Bellevue supports replacing the 1% cap in annual, on annual property tax levy increases with a limit that allows cities to respond to local needs, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no.
No.
Okay, so that does not pass. All right. Next, I'm going to call on Councilmembers on to speak to the legislative agenda that's before us.
Okay, thank you. And Mayor, just to be clear, are you looking for one amendment and then we're going to keep going?
We're going to do one amendment at a time.
Okay.
So if you have more than one, you can do one at a time.
Okay, great. We received in our email just before the meeting, a request from Mercer Island to add to our ledge agenda a support for, and I'm looking for the language. I don't know if my fellow council members saw that. Their marine patrol vessel is at the end of their useful life and they're requesting appropriation funding from the state to replace those. And the letter that we received says that, and I would, my amendment would be worded like this, that we should add a sentence that says ensure continuous marine patrol services through funding to replace the two Mercer Island marine patrol vessels. And it sounds like that would support what Mercer Island is requesting and these two marine vessels are part of mutual aid for Bellevue as well. And so I'd like to actually hear from the staff about that particular item and if that is indeed the case, that this is part of a kind of a mutual aid to be able to use those vessels, then I think we should be willing to add that to our state ledge agenda to lend support to that request.
I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not inclined to want to support something on the fly like this unless I get real confidence from the staff that they feel this is a great idea and they really thought it through.
Uh, thank you. We, I did see that email just before the meeting started and actually since, since the meeting started, took a moment to reach out to the City of Mercer Island's contract lobbyist, who I know, to say, hey, we'd love to find out more. Can you give us more information? I am, we are, as we were talking to all the departments, we did talk to our fire and police departments. They did mention that we have a relationship for mutual aid, marine patrol with the City of Mercer Island, but we did not know that they would be seeking a specific appropriation until just a few minutes ago. I think you could choose to put this in, but we don't have a lot of details about it right now. What I would advise, or my, my recommendation, would be that you give us verbal direction to be supportive of their request and we will certainly do so. It, it is their request and we certainly can be supportive of it. There's nothing in our agenda that precludes us from being a helpful voice of support for their appropriations request and we certainly will work with Representative Sen and the other members who will be carrying that item as a priority forward.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we support continuing to reach out to them to, to support the needs so that we ensure that our marine patrol services that Mercer Island provides to the city be able to be continually supported. And if it's not exactly the way that I thought the wording could be, then just supporting what the language is that they are looking for of support.
Okay. I, I'm, I'm going to make it, I can't make it a mo, can I see, go ahead. I, I would like to amend that, but I can't. So I'm hoping someone else might.
I'll give it a shot. Because I think, I know what you're going to say. So I agree with the Mayor's comments. I think that when them sending, I didn't even see this email till Councilmembers on mentioned it, it was sent at 5:48 PM. The, pretty hard to deal with on the fly. I, I, I think that there's a lot of times we can, we do support things that aren't in the ledge agenda. It's like I was saying before, if we can help another city and not hurt ourselves, we do it all the time. So I would make a substitute motion that we not add this to the legislative agenda, but that we work with Mercer Island to get more information and help them behind the scenes and that we also let them know about our priorities so they can maybe help us. But that we not add it to the ledge agenda, but that we quietly support it once we know more.
Second.
Anybody, I guess we need to vote on whether we want that as a, I think you take the substitute up first. Substitute amendment.
And if it passes, then the other amendment doesn't need to be voted.
I'm fine with withdrawing.
Okay, well, all those in favor of the substitute amendment replacing the first amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so let's speak to the value of this amendment now that you proposed.
Did we just pass it?
We, it's, we passed it as, to replace the first motion?
Yes, you passed the substitute motion.
We just passed the substitute motion. That's what I said, if we pass it, then the other one's dead.
Right.
Yes.
Okay.
So we just passed it.
All right, fine.
Thanks.
Good. Any other amendments to that? I know you have another amendment, so go ahead, Councilmembers on.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I wanted to propose on page four, under transportation. So in, on page, let me, hold on. Let me get the exact wording. So I want to amend in the state policy statement in the transportation section at the end of the second sentence, following the words vulnerable populations, that we add the words consistent with our adopted Vision Zero goals. So with this language added, it would read Bellevue's mobility, land use, equity and climate goals depend on an integrated transportation network that improves safety and efficiency while investing in vulnerable populations consistent with our adopted Vision Zero goals.
Is there a second? Okay, that motion fails. Do you have another motion?
I do.
Go ahead.
I thought we were only doing one at a time.
We are, but that didn't get a second, so we're moving on to a third.
Oh, okay, that's fine. In the same section, in the second paragraph, beginning with Bellevue supports, I make the amendment that we strike most of the existing sentence and we add the words infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of the I-405 corridor and upgrades to state highway and regional corridors. This includes to the end of the second sentence, following the words vulnerable populations. So with this language modification, it would then read Bellevue supports infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of the I-405 corridor and upgrades to state highway and regional corridors. This includes the following improvements.
Okay, effectiveness of the I-405 corridor. Can you tell me the rest of it?
And upgrades to state highway and regional corridors.
To highways and regional corridors? And you want that to be the sentence with, then with a colon?
It would then, that would be the sentence.
And it would go into the bullets?
And then it says, this includes the following improvements. If we get a second, I can talk about it. Right now, I'm just making the amendment.
I know, I'm just trying to get your amendment now and, and understand where it goes in. So that in transportation, there's one paragraph and then the second paragraph goes Bellevue supports, and then you would say.
Infrastructure improvements.
To maximize the effectiveness of I-405 corridor and upgrades to highways and regional of I-405 corridor and upgrades to highways and regional corridors," and then what?
This includes.
Is that a period, and then?
This includes the following improvements.
Okay, got it. Got it. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Uh, yes, Councilmember Stokes.
Uh, just like to ask staff what, uh, impact this would have. I mean, it seems like it would, it's language that could be in there, might be helpful, but I, it's, it's hard to tell. What do, what do you see as the impact, one way or the other, of adding this language?
Uh, I think, Councilmember, this is clarifying language. Uh, one of the things that we know, that we found out just, uh, in the last handful of weeks, is that there is going to be a reprioritization, uh, effort next year on the I-405 master plan because of, uh, the Connectin-Washington investments and Move Ahead Washington. There have been a number of different components that have been funded, but a lot that have not. Uh, a lot of time has transpired since we, the first original I-405 master plan was written. So next year, our understanding from WashDOT, they are going to do a comprehensive I-405 reprioritization exercise, which will position us very well for the next state transportation package. I think this language is a fuller clarification of our desire to see the I-405 corridor, not just strictly I-405, but see, uh, a, a really well-functioning corridor that intersects with, of course, also 520 and I-90. I hope that's answering your question.
Councilmembers on, let me let you. Yes, I'm sorry, I'm, it's not easy to run this and write at the same time, so please, go ahead.
Yeah, no, I understand, and, and I actually wanna give some context of why this showed up at, um, so late, and that is that as part of our East Side Transportation Partnership, getting that state legislative agenda ready, um, our staff worked together with several other staff members from our, on our other cities on the East Side, and, um, created this language that was more clarifying to what we were trying to do about increasing the effectiveness of the I-405 corridor and upgrades to state highway and regional corridors, because it's a much broader view than just the I-405 master plan. And with that language that the staff actually put together, I am asking for this amendment because I think it's consistent with what we are, what staff actually created, um, for ETP that I think is, um, an improvement, and, and, um, so I ask for support from my fellow colleagues.
Any other comments or questions? Out for the record, I, I support the amendment. Yes, Councilmember Robertson.
So, I, I'm a little bit, I look a bit confused, cause this is a lot of verbiage change so last minute, but, um, we've had, in our ledge agenda, every year since I've been on the council, and this is, I think, the 13th year, the I-405 master plan, which has never been built out, um, since it was adopted, and I think that we need to go beyond that, we need to, it probably needs to be remaster planned, but, um, with the verbiage change, are we stepping away from the full implementation of the master plan? Cause that's been this council's position for a long time, and we've been eating it a bite at a time, or getting it a bite at a time. So, if we take the I-405 master plan language out, um, what does that do? Cause I wouldn't mind having some verbiage change, including saying something like, including updating I-405 master plan, or something like that, um, but I'm just worried it'll be lost. What, what are we losing by taking that out? What projects are we potentially losing by taking that out?
Well, I think by, by taking out the words "master plan," you are taking out by reference all the components of the original master plan.
Right.
Uh, what is being offered, as I understand it, kind of is a more holistic, uh, way of trying to capture the 405 corridor, not necessarily the master plan, but the functionality of the corridor. Um, what doesn't change, either with the amendment or without the amendment, are the three projects that we're really trying to call out that are bulleted right underneath, which is really the, uh, I, I'd probably say the more important thing we're trying to highlight, which is, we're trying to lay a foundation for those projects to be pretty high on the list when they do come around to funding a next transportation package for the East Side.
Right, I just, I, I, I'm concerned, cause you answered my question kinda, um, but what, you didn't, I understand that either way, we're supporting those packages, but are we, and I don't think the, it wasn't implement, it was re-apprioritized for good functioning, or I can't remember what the language even was that Councilmember Zahn put forward, but it's, it's kinda like when the, the legislature took congestion relief out of the measures for transportation. A lot of people didn't realize what they were doing, and I wanna realize what we're doing. So, and I, as I sit here today, I don't understand what we're doing, it, what components of the I-405 master. I, I would be very happy to say a holistic look at the corridor, including implementation and update of I-405 master plan, I would vote for that. Taking I-405 master plan out, I can't support it, because I don't, I, I don't know what we're, what, what we're missing. I don't have that plan memorized, nor do you, I assume, so you can't tell me, what are we giving up? And what are we getting? So, in this, I just, without that information, I just can't support it. I, I'd like to have I-405 master plan included in the, the updated language, I would be good with that, so, that's what I'm concerned about.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Barksdale.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I'm curious if we could include a, to Councilmember Robertson's point, can we include a bullet below that adds, um, emphasizing what Councilmember Zahn proposed as opposed to replacing? Like, would that?
Is it redundant to do that?
I think I'm looking at the language. I think we, hmm, hold on, I go cross, cross-referencing. I think you could do, I think you could possibly do both. Um, if you leave the existing sentence, "Bellevue supports the continued implementation of the I-405 master plan and requests funding that supports the following improvements," uh, then you could create a new bullet that says, "Infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of the I-405 corridor and upgrades to state highway and regional corridors." You could do that, that way you have both, if that's what you.
Does that address your goal?
No.
Okay, all right.
Because we, when we talk about the projects that we have coming up, and what it might take to, um, maximize the effectiveness, um, you know, there may be parts of the 405 master plan that doesn't completely fit that, um, that framing, and I think we need to, um, look at that, so the words "implement the 405 master plan" actually doesn't reflect the fact that over the intervening 20 years, um, maximizing effectiveness may not include every single aspect of that plan. So by continuing to use those same words, I don't think we're creating the kind of, of space for what we're really trying to achieve as a city, and optimizing the effectiveness of the corridor, and the interchanges and other state highways that align with that.
Okay, any other comments or questions? Let me just see if anybody else wants to speak. Okay, go ahead, Councilmember Robertson.
So, oh, and I think Councilmember Stokes wants to speak as well. So, I, then I really can't support it, because the city of Bellevue, among many, many cities, was at the table for the creation of that program, and if we're going to change our ledge agenda to step away from something that we've been committed to for 20 years, I wanna know what we're stepping away from and what's gonna come in its place with my eyes wide open. I would be okay with Councilmember Zahn's language if we added a, a bullet that says something like, you know, "Continued implementation of I-405 master plan and update of the same," or something like that, but I just, I, this is, seems like a, like a Trojan horse, where we're changing the language here, and by doing so, we're completely stepping away from this policy and this plan that we've worked on for 20 years. I, I, I'm a, I'm definitely against it unless we can add something back with the 405 master plan in here. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I, I like the addition and the language and the, and the context that, uh, Councilmember Zahn has talked about here, and I think that's important. At the same time, um, now, I, I understand we have these things in place for years and years and years, and we, you know, things change, but there is, there's a big context there, and to change it kind of on the fly now, I think is not, not as helpful as it may be, thought to be. And I, I think actually, Councilmember, uh, Robertson's, um, approach of this is, blends it in there, and I, I don't think it's going to cause problems down the line, what we're looking at, in fact, I think it helps, but a lot of this is pretty ambiguous in some ways also. I mean, you know, this is policy set at a certain high level.
Okay.
So I, I think it's a good, good set, setup on this, and a good way to put both of these pieces in here and keep it going. You have the continuity as well as adding something that expands and puts a different light on what we mean by what we were trying to do in the past, so I, I support.
Let's, uh, let's vote on this amendment, and then we can add it, we can do a new amendment if we want to. So the amendment as proposed is to add, to take out, um, um, ah, Bill, you say it. Take out, take all that out and just say, well, "Bellevue supports," and then it goes to "Infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of I-405 corridor and upgrades to highways and regional corridors. This includes the following improvements," colon, that goes to the bullet points. So all in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, say no?
No.
Okay, so that amendment's gone. Is there a new amendment to address maybe Councilmember Barksdale's compromise?
Uh, can you scan me the language and I'll craft something?
I just crossed it out, but.
Okay, but I'll, I'll read it. See if she can read my reading. So, uh, let me just think about this for a second. So, let's, uh, I move Councilmember Zahn's language for that intro paragraph, and then to add a new bullet that says, should it be another bullet, or does it make it look, cause that's projects, right? Okay, so let me just, let me just think about this for a second.
I'll give you time to think.
Give me time to think. Um, "Bellevue supports infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of the I-405 corridor and upgrades to highways and regional corridors, including implementation of the I-405 master plan and updates to such plan." Period. This includes the following projects, or following improvements. Does that get us there? Would that, would that make sense?
What do you think?
Maybe, what's that?
Where you said "updates," and you just say that maximize effectiveness.
Okay, so put it, reorder it, so it would be, uh, "Bellevue supports infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of the I-405 corridor, comma, update of the I-405 master plan and implementation of the same, comma, and upgrades to highways and regional corridors." Period. This includes the following improvements.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that?
I just wanna make sure that staff got that and it makes sense.
Yeah.
Can I, can I, could I read it back to you one more time? I just wanna make sure we haven't used the word "update" too many times, but I think.
Please do, cause this was very much on the fly.
Okay. Is it, "Bellevue supports infrastructure improvements to maximize the effectiveness of the I-405 corridor, comma, update of the I-405 master plan and..."
Implementation of the same.
Thank you. Implementation of the same and upgrades to state highway and regional corridors.
Correct.
Period. This includes the following improvements.
Or the, yeah, or this request, I guess it should say this includes.
And requests funding.
And requests funding.
That supports the following.
Yeah, we need to make sure we request the funding.
The following improvements.
The following improvements.
Uh, this, this includes funding?
No, and requests funding that supports the following improvements.
Oh, and?
Well, you can, you can, you can massage that.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
We just wanna make sure we're asking for funding.
Yeah.
And we're wanting, giving it to support and requesting funding for those improvements.
Okay.
So that is the amendment before us, that's been seconded, and I'd like to give Councilmembers on an opportunity to speak in favor or against this.
I, I appreciate my colleagues working on this so that we can capture the essence of, um, the full flavor of what we're talking about as a council, and I think this language will ultimately, uh, make our ledge agenda stronger, because I think that the original proposed language that has been there for many, many years doesn't fully capture what we're, what we are ultimately trying to do with making sure that we're actually maximizing the effectiveness of that corridor, which is our lifeblood, and so I appreciate having an amendment that, uh, more broadly captures the, the points of view, and, um, happy to support it.
Okay, so all those in favor of Councilmember Robertson's amendment inspired by Councilmember Zahn, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, thank you. Uh, um, next, Councilmember Zahn, do you have another amendment?
I'll pass to my colleagues.
Okay, um, let's see, Deputy Mayor, do you have an amendment?
I do not, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Barksdale, do you have an amendment?
Uh, no amendment, but a question.
Okay.
All right. So, um, let's, I, the, the agenda is pretty comprehensive, excuse me, um, last session, we also had a pretty comprehensive agenda, but something came up and then what part of the agenda was, in my opinion, sort of spread across a little bit too broadly. How, how are we, um, positioned to respond if something comes up that maybe we haven't had a chance to discuss, but it is maybe something that we should, to, does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay.
Uh, yes, so, uh, that, that is correct. We have tried to, we have endeavored to develop an agenda that tries to strike the right balance of giving us clear direction of what we want to seek and represent in Olympia at the same, and give us enough, especially in the policy statement, enough coverage to really feel like we have clarity and confidence about where the city of Bellevue stands and where we want to use our voice. Having said that, if issues emerge that we feel, you know, a little uneasy about whether or not we have clear support from our full council, uh, then we will come here with updates as needed. Uh, I feel like I can probably talk my way into a few minutes on the calendar if necessary, and, uh, also at the same time, we've also been, um, thinking creatively about what we can do while respecting the Open Public Meetings Act. We also wanna see what else we can do to give you more regular updates without having to use up valuable Monday night time, um, when we just wanna keep you apprised, not necessarily get you to sculpt or weigh in on particular issues, but just keep you in the know. So we're also working on some, uh, additional tools to find ways to keep you more readily abreast of what's going on down there at the same time. I, I hope that might have answered your question.
Yes, thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, um, Councilmember Robertson, do you have any amendments?
I have no amendments, and I thank staff for working with all of us over all these weeks to craft a very good ledge agenda. Thank you.
Councilmember Stokes?
What she said.
Okay. And then me, and I guess I would say, you know, I think that staff has really explained the avenue for bringing things forward, and we do have a council retreat coming up early next year where we can also bring things up, so it's not a done deal, it's, it's ever-evolving. So if we wanna discuss Mercer Island Marine Patrol later, or get more information on it, or get an opinion on it, we can do that as we move forward. So, um, is there an amendment to adopt the state legislative agenda as amended?
I move to adopt the state legislative agenda with the transportation amendment.
Second.
All those in, any, any comments? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Great. Okay, with that, we will take a break, and we will come back in about seven minutes. Thank you. We're moving on to our next, um, study session item. Mr. Miyaki, would you like to introduce this?
Sure, thank you, Mayor, and Councilmembers. The second and last topic on your study, study adjustment, uh, study session agenda this evening is the council's consideration to begin work on the Tree Canopies Land use code amendment. Joining us this evening for the staff presentations are listed. Joining us this evening for the staff presentations are Liz Stedig, interim co-director, as well as Nick Whipple, planning manager, and Christina Galant, senior planner, all from the Development Services Department. And then I'm going to hand it over to you, Liz.
Thank you, City Manager, and good evening, Mayor Robinson, Deputy Mayor Newen House, Councilmembers. Thank you for having us this evening. I'm joined tonight, as the City Manager mentioned, by Nick Whipple and Christina Galant. They'll be providing the PowerPoint presentation. They'll do a short introduction. So it's really exciting to be here. This is a code amendment that we have wanted to be getting on the ground. I know that there's clearly a lot of support, just evidenced by everyone in this audience tonight. So it's exciting to be moving into this Tree Canopy Code Amendment work. There's a lot of policy direction for this work as well, both in the Environmental Stewardship Initiative and in the Comprehensive Plan, and Christina will be providing more information about that. And then we do want to talk about what the process will be tonight, and they will also go through, we're going to be changing up our process a little bit for this one, so we can make sure that we have really good engagement with the community, with all of the other interested parties, including some of our own city departments, and we'll talk about that a little bit more as well. Lots of public engagement on this one. We're excited to be here. So I am going to pass this on to Nick in a moment, but why don't we go through the?
Hold on for just a moment, because we're not seeing the slides.
Oh.
There we go.
Okay. And this slide is probably not the most exciting one in the deck, but I'll go ahead and walk through it really quickly. So this is simply to initiate work on a Tree Canopy Code Amendment. Those amendments would, and also to direct the Planning Commission to process the land use code amendment. In this particular case, there will likely be code amendments to the land use code and also to Bellevue City Code. Those amendments that go, that are related to the city code, mainly related to clearing grade, would not go to the Planning Commission. So there may be kind of a little bit of two separate paths that are running concurrently besides each other. So I'll go ahead and pass this on to Nick, and he can get started with the presentation.
Great, thank you. And good evening, Mayor Robinson, and Deputy Mayor Newen House, and members of the council. So for tonight's presentation, we wanted to first talk about the policy basis for this item, as well as the proposed objectives for this land use code amendment. Christina will then talk about the existing code and opportunities, including how the land use code currently regulates trees and where staff has flagged areas for potential updates. Then we'll talk about how we plan to process this code amendment, and then the robust public engagement that we have planned for this effort. So to start us off with the policy basis, so Bellevue's Environmental Stewardship Plan Strategy N1 includes six priority near-term actions to increase tree canopy citywide. This effort will aim to advance actions that call to introduce requirements for tree preservation to further support the achievement of the 40% tree canopy goal. The action also will, or this item will also include a comprehensive review and update of provisions in the land use code and Bellevue City Code to ensure that we have sufficient code provisions for tree preservation, retention, replacement, and protection during construction. It also, the project will evaluate ways to incentivize replanting or retaining the right tree in the right place, as mentioned in the Environmental Stewardship Plan, and ways to collect better data to understand changes to the city's tree canopy during permitting. We also have a policy direction in the environment element of the Comprehensive Plan with Policy EN-71 to preserve a portion of significant trees throughout the city, and in the parks, recreation, and open space element with Policy PA-31 to manage Bellevue's forest resources to ensure their long-term vitality. In terms of tree canopy, so the city has historically performed a tree canopy assessment every five to 10 years, which is necessary to understand changes to both the canopy and then permeable and impermeable surfaces in Bellevue. So the last, the results of the last survey, which was in 2019, estimated that the city's tree canopy increased to 39%. So this is a 3.4% increase from 2011 to 2019. While the overall trend is positive, there still remains opportunities for improvements. For example, neighborhoods such as West Bellevue, Wilburton, Newport, and Belred experienced net losses in tree canopy during this time. Net losses, they would range anywhere from 1% net decrease in Belred and Newport to a 3% net decrease in West Bellevue and in Wilburton. In terms of project objectives, this, this code amendment would allow for a comprehensive review of the different codes related to tree retention, preservation, and replacement. It would support the city's 40% tree canopy goal and the goals of retention, preservation, replacement, and protection. Another key objective is to balance housing production needs, as well as improve the function and clarity of the code, and to capture better data to understand changes to tree canopy, as well as to supplement the periodic tree canopy assessment that the city performs. So with that, I will turn this over to Christina Galant to walk us through the existing code. Christina?
Thank you. So over the next series of slides, I'm going to walk through a little bit of context on how we regulate trees today, and as we go, note some areas of improvement that have been identified for potential inclusion in the project. So to get things started, we sometimes refer to the tree code as a shortcut, but in reality, we have a fairly complex network of regulations in different areas of the code to consider. So in general, we can put these into two buckets. One, set of regulations that apply with regard to development proposals. So those will be our tree retention requirements in the land use code, which establish the share of significant trees which need to be preserved with development, with some variations there between our bridle trails, R1 district, and other parts of the city. And the other major bucket are regulations that apply outside of a development proposal, so just people trying to potentially remove trees on their own property. In that case, we have regulations in our clearing and grading code for permit standards, again with variations between bridle trails and other areas. In either case, we do have critical areas, our critical areas ordinance regulates tree removal and replacement within critical areas. Those regulations are quite a bit more stringent, and we're not proposing to change them with this project. The transportation code also regulates trees and vegetation as they intersect with our public rights of way. And then across all of those, we have some enforcement provisions in our Civil Violations Code, also the city code. So some additional context as well, when we talk about trees, and we've been mentioning significant trees, which is just to notice that we don't regulate all, all trees, which is common. And so currently, our, our definition of significant tree is that it's a healthy tree with a minimum eight-inch diameter. Healthy is a fairly subjective term, which we're proposing to look at for, with adding some more objective support there, that that eight-inch diameter, well, as well as a bit higher than many of our neighbors that tend to more commonly use a six-inch diameter, which means they regulate more trees than we do. We have, of course, earlier this summer, adopted an interim landmark tree ordinance, establishing some additional permit standards for trees larger than 24 inches in diameter. So with this project, another key opportunity is to look back at that interim ordinance and think about what we might want to incorporate in the permanent code if we would want to do any tweaks there, to see if we got that right. There are also variations, again, for critical areas in some districts with specific landscape requirements. Now brings us to the first of those two major buckets, tree removal outside of a development proposal. So currently, a permit is required to remove any landmark tree, again, that's an interim, more than five significant trees within any three years, any significant tree in the bridle trails, R1 district, and more than 25% of the live crown of any significant tree. And that is a permit requirement, it is not an absolute limit. So one question for the project here would be whether we would want to impose any additional limits, including removal with a permit. We would also note that replacement is only, is only required in limited cases currently. So another question for this project is checking in on whether or not we would want to expand those replacement requirements. Next, we're on to a development proposal, and I'm going to walk through a very simplified, highly artistic example of how we work with our tree retention regulations. So starting with the first step, the first piece is identifying which trees are subject to our retention standards. So in this example, we have a few trees that would not be subject. So we have a dead tree, which does not meet the definition of healthy. We have a small tree that's below the threshold, and we have a stump. So any trees that were removed recently, even if they were permitted, cannot be included in that retention calculation. So an opportunity there might be to count recent removals in tree retention calculations. So then the next step, we've identified four trees that would be regulated as part of that proposal. In, in this case, in, in many cases, the, the requirement is to retain 30% of the total diameter inches of significant trees. So depending on the size of trees, that can play out in different ways. For our hypothetical here, we're saying that two, two trees have to be retained. Again, replacement is only required in limited cases. And our code currently has some criteria to help guide selection of retained trees, but those criteria are, again, more subjective, not necessarily really well-aligned with our canopy goals. For example, we don't mention landmark trees or native species, but we do mention skyline features. So that's an opportunity there. We also, because this is percentage-based, we can only apply that when trees are present. So if a, if a parcel's heavily wooded, there are going to be more trees required to be retained. If there aren't any trees on the property, there's no requirement to add a certain minimum, for example. So finally, we have our retained trees in our example here. The project moves on to development, and our code currently does require tree protection techniques during construction. However, we just have the one provision stating that, and then we do have a recommended techniques in our best management practices. So one opportunity might be to codify some of those key protections in the code to make sure they're really clear, things like protective fencing. But another big issue is that our code does not actually define what retained means, what the duration is for a retained tree. So another key opportunity is to really clarify that in the code. Next, tracking and enforcement. So as mentioned, just given the way that we regulate trees currently, we do have limited data to really track more comprehensively our, our tree removal and retention, and how that's impacting our canopy. So because of that, our system is largely complaint-driven. We find likely many are simply unaware of the requirements when issues come up. I'm thinking of the example, if somebody buys a home that was previously built, they don't know which trees were designated for retention, they remove up to their five within the period, thinking they're consistent, but could inadvertently remove retained trees. And our, our historic practice has been to work toward voluntary compliance. So for trees, that typically is working with the property owner to replant, but not necessarily charge fines. So with this project, we have an opportunity to look at those mechanisms and see if we have the correct ones in place while also improving our tracking systems. So as mentioned, we have proposed a slightly different process compared to our usual code approach here, just due to the complexity of the project and the need for outreach here. So we're proposing basically an extra phase at the beginning to conduct some more outreach that is broad, focused on sharing how we regulate trees today, what some of the potential priorities for the project could be, soliciting general feedback on some of those fundamental questions, and firming up our code approach and definitions. We anticipate this phase to be likely through the first quarter of 2023, and after that, probably in the second quarter of next year, we would come back first to the Planning Commission for a check-in, to share what we've been hearing so far and get feedback, and then to check in again with the council to share what we've heard from the public and from the Planning Commission, and get some direction to move forward. From that point, it becomes more like a standard land use code project. So we incorporate what we've heard, develop all of our recommendations, conduct additional outreach to solicit feedback on those recommendations, and then move on with a couple study sessions with the Planning Commission, then into our final action phase, a public hearing and action with the Planning Commission, followed by council study session and action. So with the engagement, just, we wanted to note a couple of the key stakeholder groups that we want to work with, anticipating as broad of outreach as we can feasibly accomplish. First, there are a number of environmental advocacy groups in the community that are very closely connected on this issue. We also want to make sure we're reaching out to a broad swath of our residents, including those that aren't quite as engaged on this topic historically, so our renters, multifamily residents. Also, the development community, to make sure that we're calibrating these recommendations to make sure development's still feasible. And then, of course, coordinating internally as well with our departments that work with our, with our codes, particularly parks and transportation. Another opportunity is that several of our neighbor cities have either recently updated or in the process of updating their own codes, so there is quite a bit of an opportunity with information sharing and collective knowledge to draw from. So lots of content. So just to summarize some of the major issues that we are looking at for this project, first would be evaluating the definition of our significant and landmark trees, evaluating any additional limits on tree removal with a permit, clarifying our retention requirements, improving our tracking systems for tree removal and retention, evaluating, expanding our replacement requirements, assessing our current enforcement mechanisms, and finally avoiding barriers to housing production. Thank you. With that, again, the direction we are seeking this evening is to initiate work on the Tree Canopy Code Amendments and direct the Planning Commission to process the land use code amendment.
Thank you very much for that presentation. So it's pretty clear, we do not need to come up with recommendations for a decision here. What we're looking for is an opportunity just to direct this to go to the Planning Commission. So why don't we start with a motion?
Certainly, Mayor. I move to direct staff to initiate tree work on the Tree Canopy Code Amendments to support tree preservation, retention, replacement, and protection, and direct the Planning Commission to process the LUCA.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Councilmember Zahn, you want to start us?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I'm really excited that we're go, we're moving forward with this. As we can tell, our community has been encouraging us to move forward faster, because we're losing a lot of trees as development happens throughout our community, and we can see that, although a number of neighborhoods are well over the 40%, there are many that are below 40% tree canopy, and trees are shrinking all the time. So, and I also appreciate that phase one includes the education piece, because I think that before we can start with compliance, we really need to get the education about, oh, sorry, what we need to be doing. I guess my question is this, because a lot of times we incent for the behaviors that we want to see, and I'm kind of wondering if we, as part of this work, would also think about how we incent homeowners or property owners to love their trees, adopt their trees. I know that sometimes when I'm out at different conferences or the National League of Cities, some of the things they talk about is how they work with the community to incent for retaining their trees. So, and, so both in terms of looking at how we prevent cutting of trees, is there something we can do on the other side of, of the carrot of how we might incent for folks to retain as many of their trees as we can? And is that part of this? Because I look at the summary of issues, and I'm not really seeing that other positive framing, and wondered if that's possible.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Zahn. I believe a lot of that is probably in coordination with the Environmental Stewardship Group and Jennifer Ewing, and I think we can make some connections there and try and think about, A, how she can, and their group can help us with the education, but then also what are the incentives that they can start to bring to the table to recommend that. In our code work, the, the education piece will be very important, and as we do develop that education piece, that can be part of the incentive of providing what is the benefit to the homeowner of maintaining, you know, additional trees, so on, and provide that when people are interested. So I think there's some, some relationships there that we can build on.
Yeah, I mean, the incentive could be, you know, being a tree champion, you get a special placard, I don't know. And then the other? And then the other question, I know that some of the cities I talked to recently, they have some, you know, trees that are really special to their city and a lot of the times in the southeast, they have a lot of those types of trees. And are we also looking at kind of if there are certain native species that we would say they are actually even more special? And I think something is in here, but I just want to confirm that.
There is traditionally something around the trees that we want to maintain, we provide them with kind of a higher value. And our current code actually does that as well. So some of the tree species that are the evergreen trees and so on are counted at a higher level. So we do incorporate that today and would plan to continue to look at that as we move forward, especially those trees that are disease-resistant and such. That's another area where we have to provide some flexibility.
Yeah, really excited and glad that we're doing all the outreach. Thank you.
Councilmember Robertson, followed by Councilmember Braxdale.
Thanks. I support moving this forward. I think it's really, really good. I think a lot of the framing that you have suggested is really smart. You talked, in particular, I'll just pick up on the last thing, Councilmember Zahn waited on, about how we value some trees over the others. And I think on one of the slides, you talked about selection criteria. I think that's really important because an alder is not the same as a cedar. And cottonwood is not the same as a sequoia. I mean, they're just not. And there are some trees that really are, maybe some people call them weed trees. I don't know that we should value those as much as we want to value, for example, a medrona. So I think that that's going to be really important. I think it's important to look at the impacts, not just on tree retention and housing production, but also on the impacts of what this does to the cost of housing. So one of the things, there's a couple of things that weren't on your list. One of the things I think that we need to consider is the impacts of covenants and view protection. I think, Nick, you said something about right tree in the right place. There can be, there's a lot of trees in Somerset. There's also view protection. So a lot of the trees are either very old, mature evergreens. I have some behind me that support families of bats and things and owls, and it's wonderful. But then there's also lower-growing trees. Because for some people, the trees are in the way of the view, and other people, the trees are the view. And I think we should have room in our code for both. We certainly don't want to adopt a code that doesn't allow someone to right-size their tree and therefore they're violating their covenants and getting sued. They either comply with the city code or they get a lawsuit from their neighbor. I mean, we can't put people in that position. So I think we need to absolutely look at that. I think we need to be, I agree that we need to outreach to builders. As we know, there's been some lawsuits from builder organizations against tree codes. So we want to work with people so that we can protect the trees as well as make sure that we find the right balance. One of the people or one of the groups or categories on your list that we were not going to, that is not listed on outreach, I know we have an urban forester on staff. I know we do. I've talked to him. I think we should make sure that we talk to our urban forester. We probably have arborists as well, so that they can weigh in on some of these issues. I think that's really important. I'd support clarifying the duration of retention. I support counting recent removals. All these developers who are getting people to clear their lots before they sell them, that's a big part of the problem. I think that that will first not put the burden on the homeowners when they're selling their lot, but it also will make it, it'll right-size it. It doesn't create a loophole. So all of those things, I think, are really important. Make sure I have everything that I wanted to touch on. Oh, and then I had an idea about documenting. I like that we do an assessment every five to 10 years. We have amazing technology now that, on aerial photos with a high degree of density of pixelation or whatever, you can, we could do an aerial survey of the city at the time this ordinance that we're talking about crafting is passed, so that we'll know exactly what trees are where when the ordinance is passed. And we should do that on a regular basis. But that way, we'll know if something's taken down because we'll have the dense, and that'll cost some money. So I'd like to make sure that we look at that as well. That'll also help where, you didn't mention it, but people take out trees from native growth protection areas, which are covenanted to not remove stuff. That'll also help us with that as well. So I think that that's all really good. And I'm looking forward to engaging in this work as a council member and as liaison to the Planning Commission. The community's been waiting for this for a long time. Thanks.
Councilmember Braxdale.
Thank you. I support moving this to the Planning Commission. I just had a couple of, one question out of curiosity and then one suggestion. Given that we're talking about tracking, is there a way we can make this available to the community so like we could start to see evolution of tree canopy over time? So I'm curious about that. And the second part, one stakeholder group potentially are, I don't know if they're the most appropriate, but landscapers, for example, or other groups that people hire to cut down trees, for example, so might engage with them as well, more so, I guess, from an education and, you know, and so forth perspective. But they just seem like a stakeholder group to consider.
Yeah, thank you. In terms of the tracking, we will be developing tracking mechanisms. Kristina, have you looked into any of that so far?
Yeah, so one example, some other cities have, for example, they don't necessarily have a full permit for every significant tree removal, but there's a fairly simple registry form that you fill out that kind of asks some basic questions to flag, oh, this one might need some additional review, could potentially have some other permits. So that can be done affordably or in some cases even free, depending on the jurisdiction, to capture kind of more of that tree data without going so far as really charging an intensive permit. So one option.
Thank you. And I would be interested in thinking more about how we can publicize the tree data that we have. So we'll continue to work on that. I appreciate that. You also mentioned about the landscapers. We will be working at looking out to the arborists and some of those organizations as well. And I know that we have a lot of contacts within those communities from the people who are coming in for their tree cutting permits today. So we have some ability to find them and get in contact.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lee.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very good ordinance, and I support it. And I appreciate the public's interest because we all realize climate change, how much environment is being impacted. So I think this is a good thing. But I also appreciate Councilmember Robertson's conversation about, you know, the different neighborhoods and characteristics and so on. And I recall that many years ago, we actually talked about trees. And at that time, we have certain codes that's established. And as you noted, you know, Bydett Chilwell's is one area, and the rest of the city's another area. And so we do have to be mindful of the local covenant and so on. And so knowing the fact and knowing the data, as suggested, we have technology to do so, that would give everybody a real good idea. And that makes it easier for the neighborhoods also. Neighborhoods, I think it's a good source to enforce the code that we're talking about, you know? It's the knowledge, it's the information, it's always support. And I think one of the ways to do that is through community organizations. You know, if they have a covenant, it would be good for them to enforce it through their own association, their own neighborhoods, and that would make things easier for everybody. So I think this is a good thing. And, you know, getting the better knowledge is a good thing to do and the information. And then hopefully, a lot of it can be self-enforcing. But mostly, you know, we can definitely provide the guidance and enforce it necessary. So good job.
Thank you, Councilmember Lee.
Thank you.
And I'm going to go to Councilmember Stokes, if I can clarify, this is not an ordinance tonight. We're just directing staff to initiate the work and send it to the Planning Commission. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, I got your message. No, I think this is really good. One of the things that, and very comprehensive, and it's just exciting to see that, there are a lot of issues. In fact, the thing that council members have mentioned is these, a lot of issues that we've kind of messed around with for a long time. So this is really good at getting it together and have to really appreciate and thank the community for being so positive about this and doing what, you know, neighbors do with council councils and other things, making decisions is get their voice to us. And that is really appreciated. I'm really excited about this, and I think we're going to have a change that's going to be very positive. Two things I want to just ask a question about, you don't have to get in detail, but one is, I would like to suggest at some point down the line, having the Parks Board give some input and have work with them on this because they're pretty tied into a lot of the areas in terms of what's good for parks and it's all connected. And, you know, you count, when you look at the trees, a lot more park trees than that. So I think that's good to look at. And the other thing that's always puzzled me on this, and when we say we want a 40% goal, but then you drive around a lot of parts of the city and there're just trees all over, you know you've got probably 90%, you know, 60 and 90% there. I think, again, it's that public information and education that, and there are three areas on the map here, of course, that have a very low number of trees. And that's, I think, actually, I'd like to know, kind of a little more nuanced, is where is the, where are the larger canopy areas and what's the percentage? And what are the percentages that, you know, that are very low? And in your calculations, how do you use all those together to overall get a 40%? And again, the 40%, sometimes I've heard people say, well, that's not a hard goal. Look around, we've got all these trees, and say, we don't have to worry about it. So I think it's getting people educated, what we really mean by that and the area specific, what you plan for is really good, is how are we going to go and work on areas that need a lot more care in the whole tree canopy issue? So I think it's a really, really good program and a good way to attack this and looking forward to the results and the conversations. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, this is a great conversation. Thank you so much for the presentation this evening. And this is going to work and pair so nicely with our Environmental Stewardship Initiative. So just thrilled to get to this point where we're going to push this to the Planning Commission to further this along. You know, I think so much of this is just clearly, the definitions, having them clearly stated, the process clearly stated, there's the education piece. I love Councilmember Braxdale's idea about making sure that we're reaching out to professional tree cutters because so often, well, hopefully, we don't see too many residents trying to take a very large tree down by themselves, which as we've seen in, well, this is the impetus for the mayor's interim ordinance on this, was that can be a very dangerous endeavor. So I think the use of those professionals is going to be widely used in the city. So I think contacting them and educating them is going to be a huge piece. I'm also a big fan of the aerial viewing of tree canopy around the city. I think that's great because I think we're all concerned about the environment and we don't want co-compliances driving around trying to find trees that may or may not be cut down. So we're just adding to the pollution there. So, and I think you made an important comment about the outreach. And I just want to emphasize that because we really want to take that Bellevue approach and make sure all stakeholders are at the table. We don't want to be in a position like the city of Kirkland's in right now, where there's litigation and that, you know, that's going to significantly delay. And I believe the city of Redmond now has actually delayed moving forward until that has been resolved. So in that scenario, we're not protecting trees and we're not creating housing. So let's try and stay away from that. So I really think making sure that we're hearing from all parties, all parties are heard, all of their concerns are addressed as best as possible, I think is really critical. But just again, thrilled that we're moving forward with this and I can't wait till it comes back to us. So thank you for all the great work up until this point already.
Thank you. I'll just, a couple of things. First of all, I know when we did our Environmental Stewardship Initiative, we put in a clause that said, make sure we consult with the community, because we have a lot of experts in the community, and I know that we're going to do that. But I think a lot of people in this room know a whole lot more about tree codes than I do. And so I'm really excited to engage with them, and this sounds like this process will be doing that. I wonder if we are, and maybe you said this, but it wasn't really spelt out to me, are we looking at the comprehensive plan as well? And are we looking, no, we're not. So can we, can we think about how we might impact the comprehensive plan with our values and our, whatever recommendations we come up with? Yeah, I can take that one briefly. So we are right now, as you all know, you know, kind of moving into this big rolling machine of the comprehensive plan periodic update, which of course is very substantial. So we can certainly make sure that Jennifer Ewing and her team have this on their radar. And as they start to develop those sections of the comprehensive plan, look to council for some direction on that, but we can kind of coordinate some of that. That would be good to dovetail, the information as it comes in and the recommendations as they get approved. Okay. The other thing is the My Bellevue app. Can we look at how we might utilize that to give people the opportunity to report trees that they're concerned about and get information on our tree codes? Yeah, I think I will ask Christina if she can give a little input on that. We did actually take your direction when we came back previously for the landmark trees, and we worked with the My Bellevue app to create some reporting structures. What I don't think we have anything on is kind of education at this point through the My Bellevue app. But Christina, do you have any further?
I don't have specifics to the My Bellevue app. We did talk about using Engaging Bellevue once this gets going to capture information that way, but it's, you know, every tool is important and we can look into that.
Yeah, just some link or something and utilizing It's Your City as well as educational.
Yes.
So it might just link to that, who knows? Anyway, I'm sure the great minds in the space will figure out good recommendations for us. So that was, those were my only comments. Are we ready to vote? All those in favor of directing, you already made the, did you already make?
I did.
And we did. Okay, so all those in favor of directing staff to initiate work on the Tree Canopy Code amendments to support tree preservation, retention, replacement, and protection, and direct the Planning Commission to process the LUCA, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great, that passes. So we are going to enter into a bunch of ordinances. And I wonder if we should take a quick break or should we just plow into them?
I think we could probably get through these pretty quickly.
Okay, all right, let's do it then. So let's see, we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10.
And a resolution.
10 resolutions.
There are 10 ordinances.
10 ordinances and a resolution.
And then those are, will precede the adoption of the full budget with all those included.
Correct, correct, Mayor. We will.
Go ahead.
So we are in front of you this evening requesting the council's consideration of adopting the 2023 operating budget and seven-year capital plan. And just by way of background, on November 14th, which was last week, a number of city council members proposed amendments to the budget. Each proposed amendment was presented by the sponsoring council member and were discussed and voted on by the entire council. Tonight's ordinances formally adopt the '22 and '23 operating budget and seven-year capital plan. They reflect decisions made by the entire council last week. So we have Toni Call this evening, who's the director of the Finance and Asset Management Department. She's going to give you a brief presentation, which will kind of categorize all the ordinances and actions you need to take this evening and answer any questions you might have.
So if I can just say for council information, why don't we get through these ordinances and the resolution? And then when we get to the final adoption, everybody can have a chance to speak to the budget? Okay, go ahead.
Certainly, Mayor. Deputy Mayor, councilmembers, I'll give just a brief recap of where we've been for the past seven or eight weeks. So started back with the budget workshop on March 7th. We've had two public hearings. Then on September 26th, the city manager presented his preliminary budget, which had an overview of investments and operations. At that same evening, we talked about that the preliminary budget includes an adjustment to the business and occupation tax as well as the property tax. So you'll see actions on both of those items on the next slide. October 3rd, we went into a deeper dive on investments in public safety, homelessness, the American Rescue Plan Act, and the Clean and Vibrant City Initiative. October 10th... October 10th, brought utility rate information. And under separate cover that evening, Affordable Housing also mentioned the investments in affordable housing as well. October 24th, we concluded the, the presentation of the preliminary budget with development services rates, including a land use recovery adjustment, human services commission recommendations, and finished up with investments in environmental stewardship and diversity equity inclusion. On November 7th, we held our final public hearing, and there were over 38 oral testimonies that evening, as well as about 140 written com.
Tony, I'm going to ask you to stop for just a second.
Certainly.
Senator, if you could just shut that door, I think that would help us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, go ahead.
Not a problem. So on the public hearing night, we had over 140 written folks, in addition to the 38 who showed up for oral conversation. As city manager Miyaki mentioned, on the 14th, council asked for a variety of information on CCAT, transit police, arts, and other areas, and last week gave clear direction on two specific changes to the budget, to ensure that the arts operating grants in the general fund is increased by $85,000 with a transfer from the CIP, and then also regarding Vision Zero to front-load that, to ensure that 23 and 24 have $500,000 a year in each of those years, spreading out the rest of the funding across the seven years. And again, both of those items will be taken back up at the mid-buy or the next budget cycle, depending on grant awards. So that is where we are as we come into adoption. And then, as the mayor and city manager Miyaki mentioned, we do have quite a few ordinances for you this evening. So I'll do a quick recap, and then I'll turn this back over to the mayor. So there are 10 ordinances, plus the umbrella, starting at the top. The first three are all human services ordinance. So the first is the Human Services Funding Ordinance, the allocation of the CDBG grants, and then a portion of the 1590 funds associated with behavioral health and housing stability. The next four ordinances after that, as you can see from the slide, are all the rates and the fees. The first, 6692, is the Development Services Fee. That is only setting, being set for 2023. The 2024 rate would come back at the mid-buy, and it does include the policy change on the land use recovery adjustment. Then you can see the next three, water, sewer, and storm. You'll notice that both of those are being set for 23 and 24. We have one that we don't often see, in fact, we haven't seen since 1989, which is an adjustment to the Business and Occupation Tax. It is increasing, the ordinance before you, 6696, will increase by 0.01%, which for a entity that has $1 million of taxable gross receipts in Bellevue, their BNO tax would increase by about $100 a year. And then we have the two property tax ordinances. The first is setting the property tax for 2023, and it's a total of a 2% increase, 1% council manic and 1% bank capacity. That is in addition to the Parks Levy, that is before voters for certification now. And then the resolution, which is the 10th item on the page, provides for ensuring that we are continuing to bank the appropriate amount of bank capacity we have at the county. And then at the very bottom, as the mayor mentioned, is the umbrella ordinance. Mayor, I can turn this back over to you, and we can leave the, the list up if that is helpful. I'm seeing some helpful heads, and so we'll go ahead and leave the list up.
Okay. So the first one is ordinance 6689. I'm going to start with a motion.
I move to adopt ordinance 6689, adopting the Human Services Commission 2324 Human Services Fund, funding recommendations and authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into contracts with local human services agencies in accordance with the recommendations.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go with ordinance 6690.
I move to adopt ordinance 6690, adopting recommendations for the use of 2023 Community Development Block Grant Funds as transmitted by the Human Services Commission.
Second.
Any comments or questions on that? Not seeing any, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's go 6691.
I move to adopt ordinance 6691, adopting the Human Services Commission's 2023, 2024 Behavioral Health and Housing Related Services Housing Stability Program, funding recommendations, and authorizing the city manager or is designated to enter into contracts with local human services agencies in accordance with the recommendations.
Second.
Any comments or questions on that? Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, now we're going to move on to the blue category of fees and rates with ordinance 6692.
I move to adopt ordinance 6692, regarding the development services under the Bellevue City Code. Fees for applications requiring construction, land use, fire, survey, sign, transportation, utility, and clearing and grading review and inspection services.
Second.
Any comments or questions on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the next one is 6693.
I move to adopt ordinance 6693, establish revised charges for water service, water consumption, and water standby capacity for private fire protection for the water utility for the city of Bellevue.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to 6694.
I move to adopt ordinance 6694, establishing revised sewage service charges for the sewer utility for the city of Bellevue.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, let's move on to 6695.
I move to adopt ordinance 6695, establishing revised storm and surface water drainage rates and charges for the storm and surface water utility for the city of Bellevue.
Second.
Okay. Any comments or questions? All right, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Next, we're on to the gray, which is the BNO rate.
I move to adopt ordinance 6696, relating to the Business and Occupation Tax, increasing the rate of the tax, providing an effective date, therefore providing, for a referendum procedure in accordance with the statute and amending Bellevue City Code 4.09.050.
Second.
Any comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next, we have two property tax, an ordinance, and then a resolution. The first one's ordinance 6697.
I move to adopt ordinance 6697, establishing the amount of property taxes to be levied for the year 2023, the first year of the city of Bellevue's 2023, 2024 fiscal biennium.
Second.
Any comments or questions?
I do, please.
Okay. Go ahead, Councilmember Lee.
I would not vote for the 1% increase in property tax for the reason that this is not clearly identified, and it's to balance our projected revenue expense. And so I feel that we have adequate capacity and revenue to do whatever we want to accomplish for this budget, which I'm very happy with. So I would not vote for it.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmember Robertson.
I'm going to vote for this. If we did not vote for this, we would have to find $700,000 in cuts in the budget, 690-something.
It would be actually closer to a million, because it's 1% council manic and 1% bank capacity. Oh, okay, so clo, oh, close, yes, because it's, 1% is about between 650 and 700,000. So we'd have to cut, you know, over a million dollars from the budget. This budget is really important. We're adding a lot of police, we're adding help for human services, we're adding a lot of really important things that show our value. And we don't take these decisions lightly. And, you know, we've had 9% inflation and a 2% property tax. I think that inflation is still way ahead of this. Our property tax purchasing is still going down even with this, so I'll be putting yes on it.
Second.
Any other comments or questions? Councilmembers on.
Did all the right.
Yeah, I just want to say that I, I appreciate Councilmember Lee raising this as a question, but I agree with Councilmember Robertson that, as we look at our budget, I can't contemplate where the $1 million cut would actually come from. And so it's hard at this point in our budget discussion to not adopt this ordinance, and then somehow try to figure out where over $1 million would actually land. So appreciate the discussion, I just don't think it's the right time.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Council, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. Yeah, I also just want to commend Councilmember Lee for bringing this up, and continuing to be the fiscal hawk here of the, of the city council. I really appreciate it. But given where we are with this budget, given what the tremendous needs, I'll be voting for it. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Okay. And then the Resolution 10164.
I move to adopt Resolution 10164, providing for the banking of levy capacity pursuant to RCW, 84.55.005, 84.55.0101, 84.55.050, and 84.55.092.
Second.
Okay, any comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so now we are on to, thank you for that, by the way. Great to get through those, and now those are all part of the budget that we are about to consider adopting. And I'm going to go ahead and start with a motion, and then I'm going to give everybody a chance to speak to the budget. So Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to adopt ordinance 6698, adopting the city of Bellevue's 2324 Budget and 2329 Capital Investment Program Plan, setting forth the estimated revenues and appropriations, and establishing job classification and pay ranges.
Second.
Okay, I'm going to start us off here, and just think, start with a thank you to their city manager for the tremendous amount of work that he has done preparing this budget. And I also want to thank all the staff involved, particularly you, Tony, because you have a mind like a trap, and you don't forget anything, and it's such an asset to the city, and we've really appreciated working with you on this, and over the years. You know, the budget process starts with our council retreat, where we look at our vision and our council values. We listen to the community, we take all the public input. I think we had, what, four public hearings? Or was it more? Three, three public hearings? And then the city manager proposed a draft, which we then took input on and amended, and tonight, we're seeing the result of all this work. I think it's a responsible and a responsive budget. The small increases in taxes, which include the Parks Levy, the property tax, does not equal much compared to what we get out of it. You're supposed to give me that number, but what is, what is the impact for a $1 million value per month?
I certainly could answer that. The Parks, the Parks Levy, if it is, it currently is passing, and if it continues to be certified, and a $1 million home would pay monthly about $16.67. And then the 2% property tax noted on this chart here would be another $1.50 on top of that. So you add the two together, I believe you get $18.17 a month.
Okay. And for per million dollar of your house valuation.
For a million dollar assessed value, yes, ma'am.
And, and that enables increased investments in public safety, transportation safety, our environment, parks and open spaces, human services, more efficiency in development services, and all the while maintaining our existing strong investments. It's a budget that is adaptive to a growing population of diverse individuals and diverse needs, yet serves all ages, abilities, and incomes. It is also responsive to a labile economy, while supporting the many human service and small business needs of our community. And it continues to preserve Bellevue as a city and a park, as well as one of the top places to live, work, learn, or visit in the United States. As our city has grown, so has its responsibilities. This budget reflects our commitment to serving our entire community and its economy. I'm very supportive of it, and again, I appreciate, appreciate the work of all of you, but also the council and the community weighing in. Deputy Mayor.
All right, well, thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure I can improve on that. That was very comprehensive, but I'll, but I'll try. So I too just like to thank Tony and the entire city manager staff, and everyone who contributed to this, my colleagues, for the varied perspectives and, and interests and concerns. And I especially want to thank our residents for providing us with valuable information and perspectives that we might not see every day. So especially on the, on the third public hearing that we heard, it was very, very valuable. And, you know, each, each, you know, time we go through a budget process, I kind of come away with some different things. But for me, the theme this time around was very much public safety, was very much the environment. And the environment, which includes making sure that we come together with a, with a plan and a program to address litter, to address graffiti. So really about brand Bellevue, and making sure that it remains a city that we are so proud of, and want to, want to continue to see it be not only clean, but green and safe. So, so happy with the, the significant increase in officers, the 20% increase in the budget and the transit unit. I think that's, it was very much a concern for our residents, and I think we addressed it adequately. And we're going to continue to get feedback on a lot of these budget items in the programs, be it CCAT, be it the transit unit, et cetera. So, you know, this is an ongoing process, but now they do have the funds to move, to move forward. So, and then also on the, on the human services piece, as liaison to that, to that commission in hearing the tremendous needs that we still hear in our community, despite pulling out of the pandemic, there are still real needs as it relates to housing insecurity, food insecurity, as it relates to education. There are a lot of needs there, and I'm not going to say we've solved them all, but the, the, but this, this budget will go a long way. So very proud to be a part of this, and I'll be favoring and, and in favor of this budget. And again, thank you for all your great work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And now, in order from the most experienced on the council, starting with Councilmember Lee. Sorry, that means you're last, but not least.
Thank you, well, Mayor. I want to, first of all, compliment the staff, the city manager. I mean, I've been on the council, as Mayor mentioned, for 29 years now. This has been one of the most challenging times, we know, after the pandemic, and especially with all the social changes we are witnessing, you know? A lot of changes in immigration, new residents, I mean, the multicultural community we are facing. And so we've gone through many, many city managers, many finance directors, and we've done a lot of budgets, I don't even, how many, 28 times? Used to be every year, now we changed it biennium. Still, it's a lot, and this is very impressive. It went very smoothly, very well done, very transparent. And one of the most evident is last public hearing. You have the whole place filled, and people call in, the place is full, lots of comment, lots of involvement, engagement. This is what we want to hear, what we want to see. And so, you know, but nothing's perfect, right? So, but I, I, but I want to mention a few things, I think Deputy Mayor mentioned. The thing that came to fore is public safety, which is, you know, everybody is important. We've always believed that in Bellevue. Number one, public safety, that's why people come here, businesses move here. That's why, you know, we have all these cultures coming here. Two, environment. We realize today, we evidence that, the importance of environment. You know, we see the whole world is, you know, facing the same challenge. It can have to start with us. And another one's sustainability, that's important. When you talk about sustainability, it means really, to me, everything is important, but you have to be all wrapped up in fiscal prudence, fiscal prudence. In what we're doing today, we're doing citizens' work, budget. If we don't have fiscal sustainability, we have no resources to do other stuff. Even though I may think that, wow, I don't support property tax, that's not the case. Because I think another thing that's important that we should mention is, we're looking at innovative solutions and private funding, which means partnership. We have to look at partnership with our public, with our community, with people who are supportive of environment. They are here, that they're helping us. We have experts, we can listen to them. It's nothing, it's all money. Money helps, but we've got to make sure money, you know, we have the sustainability from the public, the community. Partnership from private sources, private funding. That's why I mentioned, let's take a million dollar here from the property taxes, it's not a big deal. If we work hard, if we have the partnership we established, if we look at human partnership resources, we'll make it. And I believe our complete confidence, Bellevue will always be successful, as long as we do our way, as long as we have, have staffs and have council members, have the public that's behind us. So we need to stretch, but we're doing very well, so thank you again. I'm very proud of this budget, so I support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes. Really? Oh, I got that wrong. Councilmember Robertson.
Yeah, my two years.
Forgive me.
I'm younger, but I've served longer. 20 years next year, if you count my planning commission time. Anyway, so I'm 13, 14 next year on the council. Okay, so thank you very much for letting me talk.
Okay, so thank you very much for letting me talk. You know, the budget is the biggest policy document that this council passes. It reflects our priorities and it reflects our values. This budget does that very well, and I really support so strongly the priorities and the values that this reflects. People love living, working, and recreating in Bellevue because it's safe, it's clean, it's compassionate, it's green and sustainable, it's an inclusive, and it's a livable city. This budget holds all these priorities, holds all those priorities and funds those, you know, they say, put your money where your mouth is, and we are. The budget shows compassion for the people who need a hand up, including people who are homeless, hungry, suffering mental illness or addiction, or who need more job training or a safe place to escape domestic violence. It provides more resources to keep our community safer, community members safe by growing our police department and our fire department, making the permanent our CCAT program where we provide crisis intervention for people who are suffering. It funds work to make our transportation system both move more people and do so in a safer manner with increased investments in Vision Zero. It invests in parks, environmental sustainability, and increased funding for arts. With parks, it includes the four million dollars, my favorite project for design and engineering for the major aquatic center, that's a big win for me and for all of Bellevue. I think it's so important. And the parks investments are going to be further amplified by the recently passed levy that will make a real difference in preserving, growing, and building our city parks, open space, and recreation for the next generation of residents. I definitely would like to thank the city manager, Miyaki, Finance Director Call, who we are going to miss so much when you, when you leave for greener pastures, and the entire staff, my colleagues, the boards and commissions who weighed in, and most importantly, the public who showed up, who emailed, who testified, who came week after week to comment. And, and, you know, what, one of the most astounding things to me is that we heard from the development and business community who actually supported our budget so much that they supported raising their own taxes to fund these priorities. I mean, that was, that's astounding, that doesn't happen in a lot of places. In my years of service on the council, my primary goal has always been to keep Bellevue safe, inclusive, and livable. This budget honors that goal, and I'm very proud to support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Stokes.
Yeah, thank you very much. There's a lot, a lot that's been said that I can endorse. I do want to start off with a real shout-out of appreciation, admiration, and particularly liking the staying in there and working hard to get things resolved, coming from the city manager's office and from the staff. We couldn't have better, better people to work with. We're all part of one team and one Bellevue, and, and we're going to miss you, Tony. But I know, I can come over in the area there and say hi to you sometime, but you've just been a tremendous impact and somebody I've admired all along, and we will miss you. And I, it, I think one, a lot of things have been said, I have, I'll go over some of these other stuff, but I, it really is that we have, as a council, have really, these last couple of years, really worked, we always try to do this, but I think we really in this pandemic and everything, we have worked together to move these things forward in very weird, sometimes tricky, sometimes great circumstances. And that has been supported by a tremendous staff. It's the, frankly, I've seen a lot of staffs in a lot of things, government and otherwise, and this is, this is the best. And so I'm really proud of and pleased to be working with, with the group, and it has produced a great budget, so that's really good. What I'm really proud about is the, the impact we've made these last two years with the budget, working for the old budget and working on the new budget, is the human services, particularly working on the homeless and affordable housing, which, you know, is a real passion of mine. And I think we're doing really, really great things. We've taken risks, and we're, we've, we've done well with that. And transportation and particularly East Rail and the connections and how we, transportation is more than just taking a car down the road or even now hopping on, on a rail line or taking a bus or whatever, or taxi, but it's also walking. And one of the things in our parks levy, people say, we want to find, we want to get out and walk, we want to get around, and we're doing, we're doing that. The arts and culture piece is again something I'm so excited about. I think we've made tremendous, tremendous leaps in that and are pushing something to make Bellevue even more place to be and also that is really creating a very, very livable and I think exciting place to go. We have a lot to go in that, but we have a lot of opportunities, and I do appreciate the, the council members and the, and the city, the staff for supporting some more investment in, in the arts and culture, because that basically says a whole lot about what your city is when you have arts and culture that are really important, really meaningful, and work well. The, and the other one is the way we take on challenges, and we have opportunities, and we do a good job of that. And we do it in a very, I think, a very adult way when we have our conversations, and that's, that's very important. The, and public safety is, as we've all say, is a very, very important thing. I, I see us working, and it's not always this way, in a positive and rational community collaborative way. It's not saying, you know, it's not parsing out on one side or the other. We're working together, both the professionals and the people who are in, working with us and, and the council itself, on getting a, a really comprehensive public safety program in place that really, really is, that really addresses issues with all community members and protect them in all the different kinds of ways. I'm very proud of that. And the last thing I have to say, because I've been, I got started in government, what, with your thirteen years ago, eleven years ago now, yeah, somewhere in that range, with parks, Parks and Community Services, and doing that at, and Lynn Robinson was, was there on the Parks Board as well, and it's kind of fun coming now, all these years later, and go out to Airfield Park and see we're actually going to finally do something on it, we've been working a long time on it. So all I can say, this is a, to me, a very banner year in terms of where we've gone, particularly considering what we've gone through for the last three or four years. And by golly, with all of us together, we've done it, and we're going further. So I'm really glad for this budget, ready, ready to see it passed, and then we start working on it. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you. Councilmember Zahn.
Yes, you know, I too thank you, Tony, and Brad, and all the staff for, and my fellow colleagues, for this budget. It has grown from two years ago, and rightly so, because we are a growing and thriving city that continues to value a high quality of life for everyone that, you know, lives and works in place here. So, and I also want to, again, thank the community as well for all of your engagement and suggestions. Thank you to the voters for passing the parks levy, because if we didn't, we would be having to look under the sofa cushions to figure out how to find some of that money to, you know, help maintain and acquire more land for parks. And I believe this is the first year that our budget is grounded in equity, and so hopefully as we continue to advance our budgets in the future, that we continue to be grounded in equity, and we thank, you know, Dr. Whitehead for being here for the first budget in Bellevue where, you know, we are looking at making sure that as we look at a equitable, safe, and sustainable budget, how do we make sure that we're keeping equity always top of mind to make sure that everyone in Bellevue feels that same equitable, safe, and sustainable city that we all deserve to have? And, you know, I think that COVID has taught us a lot about where the gaps are, and so the funding that we have in here around housing, human services, safety, workforce, transportation, parks, and I really thank my colleagues for the support for increasing the budget for environmental stewardship, Vision Zero, the safe parking program that we're going to be launching in addition to the increases in first responders and public safety. I think those are really important. And the other part is also the, the piece around supplier diversity and making sure that, you know, with over two, two-point-two-billion-dollar budget over two years, that our, our diverse communities and our small businesses have the opportunities to do business with the city and that they're getting the same benefits that our taxpayers' dollars are paying for. And then just realizing that our budget doesn't stand alone, and I appreciate the fact that we, our budget continues to also have partners that help fund the various services that we need, and that as we continue to move forward, this dovetails this budget really well with our state agenda, legislative agenda, to make sure that we are also advocating for the kind of partnership and dollars that stretches our dollar even further than we are currently doing. And then lastly, I think that the, the open and transparent way that we do that and some funding in here also for more data analytics and funding for our D E I efforts, our cross-cultural center, I think that those are all things that are really important as we move forward, because sometimes we can focus on the, the low, the low-line fruit and some of the deeper things that we need to do that might take many years, like the, you know, Climate Action Plan. We really have to be intentional about putting money in there because the, the curve is very steep the longer that we wait. So I really appreciate the money that we put in the budget, and I'm happy to support the adoption. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Braxdale.
I think all the key points have been made, but I'll just say thank you to staff for your hard work, especially as we're going through a very difficult, a difficult time economically, you know, being in the tech industry and sort of seeing what's happening, but still being able to put together a budget that works for our community. So thank you, and also thanks to the community for showing up. We had a pretty good showing, so thank you.
Thank you. Save the best for last. Today, we're reminded of all the blessings in our lives, and I want to wish you all a very happy day of gratitude this Thanksgiving. Okay.
The motion's been made and it's been seconded.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, anything else I need to do? All right, meeting adjourned.